Now we're going to give it a minute. It started here in a minute. We have, we're live here from the Board of Education and we are streaming per normal via Zoom. And we have a handful, more than a handful of attendees coming through Zoom, so we'll let them get situated and we'll get going. Okay, we're going to get started. Run through a few procedural things, so bear with us. Welcome to the Special Board Meeting of the Oakwood City Schools for the July 12, 2021 session. Let's do this first, let's, let's call the role and then I'll walk through some, some steps.
Ms. Quigley?
Here.
Ms. Dar?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Duhon?
Here. All right, folks, so we have, like I said, we have, we're live in the room and we're live and streaming via Zoom and, and we're recording. And we have multiple participants around the country. We have good Wi-Fi, we have bad Wi-Fi. We have Tracy helping us from vacation, and which we appreciate. So forgive us if you see any wrinkles. We have Tom was here as well, so we had a lot of balls in the air. I think we're all set, so, but bear with us if you see some technical difficulties. We're going to start with the new business by the board, but before I do that, I want to introduce a few folks. First, Stephanie O'Hara, who's here in the room with us. I would say that she's our community liaison for, for the effort, but that's, that's not nearly enough, right? Oakwood resident, former teacher, business entrepreneur, to, to say just a few things about her. But has done great work with the group, has been involved at the APEC Committee, has been involved in this effort. So has a nice lens and perspective of, of the work that's been done. We have Brian Setser on the, on the Zoom. For those who may have been following along really closely, Brian intended to be here in person, but due to personal reasons cannot. So he is participating via Zoom. Now Brian is one with good Wi-Fi, so we're happy about that. Tom Stein is also on, another of our expert team consultants. Tom has a little bit of bad Wi-Fi, so if you see Tom come and go, you'll know why. He's not frustrated with you or us, that's just the Wi-Fi. And Doug Reeves, I don't believe is on yet, but he is our third expert who participated in this effort. And then Dr. Rampe was with myself, the final members of, I think we've called the core team. So the six of us have participated in this, this scope of engagement that we first announced last December, and where we find ourselves today. It's been a thoughtful, deliberate, a research-backed, data-driven, multi-pronged, multifaceted engagement effort, which I for one appreciate. It was, it was a, it was a great effort to be a part of. So wanted to stop there for a moment. And Brian, before I pass to you, and forgive me, we're eating a little bit of your time, but Stephanie wanted to offer, introduce and then offer the opportunity for you to say a few words if you're some kind.
Sure. I actually did write something down because public speaking isn't my favorite thing, so I'm going to be keeping this. Many of you probably haven't heard my voice during this process much, but I've been working behind the scenes. When I was asked to join this small working committee, really my initial reaction when I talked to Todd was, no way, not going to happen. So then I thought about it for a few days and I shifted because I really felt that I was called to help continue the work of our APEC Committee, where I had served, and that of several individuals who started this process four years ago. And it's just been that, a complete process. We have arrived at a shared outcome tonight by way of a recommendation, but the process and the evolution of this work, I believe, is where the most learning has truly occurred. I don't believe we could have arrived at this recommendation had this process not occurred. We had six individuals, some paid, some not, some from the district, some not, some paid experts, who came together with really varied attitudes, beliefs, pedagogy, but we were all there really willing to do the work and listen to each other. Because I believe we all really desired the very best outcome and I sure learned a heck of a lot on the way. The work was really complex. It was never a layup, ever. It involved the grading scale, numbers and research, but inherent in this process was really considering the varying nature of learning and assessing learning, and that is not easy. Our conversations via Zoom over the past six months, I have to be honest, were really interesting, extremely intimidating, infuriating, frustrating, joyful and eye-opening. We all fired things at each other and we have arrived really at common ground and that's what this is. I mean, it has been a negotiation, that, that is what this has been, in my opinion. But I, I truly believe we have landed in a place where students and teachers and board members and administration and parents can celebrate and continue to work together and learn from one another, really for our students. I have so much more I could say, but that I'll just, we have a lot more to get to. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone had a chance to hear from me. I tend to kind of float behind the scenes, so that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. And though she floats behind the scenes, she packs quite the punch, and we appreciate it, truthfully. It's been wonderful having your voice as part of the process. So with that, Brian, pass it over to you and, and you know, for those on Zoom and who are accustomed to sometimes asking questions or commenting, Brian will orient us to the platform tonight and the process. And I will serve as a moderator in that effort, but Brian, turn it over to you.
Thanks, Todd, and members of the board and all of the people who've been a part of contributing to tonight's outcome. Really grateful to have a chance to share our findings, our recommendations, and offer another opportunity on our journey towards continuous improvement, to listen and to, you know, continue to refine as we move forward, how we think about learning and how we think about the importance of it and what we're learning, you know, across the space right now. I think many of the comments that have been shared will also be echoed by my colleagues, Tom Stein and Doug Reeves, who were all on the call at present and will also participate in the Q and A at the end of tonight's session. So I want to orient you to a few things as we start. One is kind of our game plan for this evening. I want to take just a minute to recognize and celebrate some specific folks and organizations involved in the process. And then I want to make sure to kind of ground everyone who's listening, both in the room tonight, over the recording and in the days ahead, what our project goals were and what the process was. Cause I think that'll be really helpful to understand our charge and what we were asked to do as the expert team. Then I want to explain a little bit about our benchmark process, some of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that we assessed during our time with Oakwood Schools, and then provide some recommendations and some roadmap steps forward. Once we get to that point, we are going to stop and really listen and give an opportunity for folks to respond and comment, and then we'll have a Q and A period, and then the board will take the next steps this night after our session today. So that's kind of our layout of the next little bit. I want to build on Todd's comments on a few things. Todd is going to play moderator if my audio goes out. I've already made Tom and Doug co-host if that happens, but the, the issue is that, you know, Todd may get some questions in the Zoom chat, or he may have some things come his way. And that, that's all good, but I want to start with this notion of research, right? Why would we have a slide in the beginning that says, I like, meaning things that made an impression on you, that you heard tonight? Things that you wish you had seen, or things that you're wondering about or questioning? Well, we have this slide up, not because it's consulting speak, but because it's grounded in neuroscience out of Stanford University. Whenever you have a chance to give feedback, it's always great to start in thinking about what you might do or what you might consider. And instead of rushing to a question, really take the time to listen. Those of you on the call that may be Covey disciples, this is seek first to understand, then to be understood. So what we want you to do is listen to the presentation during the first part tonight and make three columns on a piece of paper, or three columns on your phone, or however you choose to organize it. One column is I like, that's something that I think the group did well. Another column is I wish, or I wonder about something that was shared or that you want to come back to. And then that allows you to see the complete process without picking one item and sort of focusing on that item, trying to understand how the expert team got there. So Todd, they may choose to share that early, our listeners tonight, but we'd really like to reserve that time for our elongated Q and A process. So if you do happen to share something in the Zoom, we're just going to say, hey, that's great, but we're going to give you time to unpack that and the experts' time to respond. The only other thing before I start the presentation is Todd, if there's any audio challenges or whatever, just stop me and interrupt, and I'll make sure to pause and make sure we're okay. So beginning with celebrations and gratitude. Hey, pandemic year, post-vaccination landscape. Boy, we've had a lot of challenges this past year. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't stop and say, you know, Superintendent Kyle Ramey from the onset of this has had a wonderful mix of challenge, refinement, questioning, really detailing, really seeking to understand. Could not have gotten to tonight without him. Our board members who I've not met, I really appreciate the opportunity to share and present the final report tonight. And thank you for your time and attention and the work that you'll do moving forward. Todd has been instrumental, much like Superintendent Ramey, in making sure that we were asked questions, that we went deeper on what we were presenting, and that we had a collective sort of mind share around the key questions that we had not answered and the things that we needed to go deeper on. So thank you, Todd, for your involvement. When we look at the comments, the opening comments by Stephanie earlier, could not agree more. It's been a, a true collaboration. Everyone should know that the core team that was involved, tremendous respect and sharing among the group, and lots of good questions and divergent thinking about how we might arrive tonight. So we would not have gotten here without Stephanie's involvement as well. The expert team wants to recognize the APEC Committee. We really read that work and we thought about what that work was, you know, intending to produce and say what the research was producing and telling us about the starting point of our work. And one of the things that I, I want to make a clear connection around is that anytime we go into an engagement as consultants, or thought leaders, or technical assistance providers, it's helpful to get an understanding of where things began or what's happened over the past few years. So not only did we spend time on that work, but we debated it as an internal expert team. We talked about ways that we were thinking it might manifest and show up in the road ahead. And then we had those discussions with the core team and among our national research as well. Now, our Oakwood community stakeholders, wow, feedback is a gift and you gave it. You gave it to us on interviews, you gave it to us in surveys and forms. There's been good discussions in the community. That is an asset. People really care about Oakwood Schools, they care about their children, their classmates, their community. That was evident, could not have gotten here without your inputs. And it was a, it was a lot of information. So making sure that we theme map that, making sure that we made that concise for the recommendations was a challenge, but also an opportunity to arrive at where we've come tonight. Now for our expert team members, I want to, you know, single out Tom Stein first. A man who's learned more about, or probably forgotten more about admissions and enrollment than I'll ever know. He was just a wonderful, you know, contributor to our work in the higher ed space. And not only throughout his career, but what's happened over the last 18 months in his network regarding COVID and post-COVID changes and challenges. And I want to make sure people really linger there as we go through the presentation tonight. It's, you know, a couple of different worlds we were managing, what happened before COVID, what colleges and admissions offices are doing since, where we think they're headed. And we were trying to organize all that under Tom's leadership, and he was really invaluable to the process. Doug Reeves, who Todd mentioned earlier, author of over 30 books, has consulted all around the world. The key phrase with Doug is evidence. He wants to see the data, he wants to share that national perspective and insight, informed by his engagements and works, work with teachers and administrators and districts around the world. So whenever we needed really great clarification around some of the finer technical points of looking at where we were, Doug always lent it a ready hand and really advised us on what we need to do over the next coming year as we make this a part of our effort, not the expert team's effort, but the, the community's effort and where this needs to go. So thank you, Doug. So I wanted to single out those event, individuals on the celebration and gratitude. And I wanted to make sure that everybody had an understanding there. The next place I wanted to linger was our actual charge. And I think sometimes, you know, in what we were hearing as feedback, or what we were thinking about in terms of, you know, trying to land on some recommendations that, you know, were meaningful to us across the data and our work together. We would also look at some of the reactions in the community. We would also look at things that, you know, had been involved with, you know, editorials, or we would look at emails that were exchanged after surveys, we read everything. And I want to make sure that I linger here on what we were actually asked to do. We were asked to collaborate with the school's team in Oakwood, a core team, to produce board recommendations for tonight. And that was related to this fair and accurate grading project. We were also supposed to deliver that draft report to the core team so that we could think about it in terms of how we've collectively represented the findings, what would come as a result of that, how it might be sequenced to make sure that it was manageable for the community, staff and teachers. And then we were supposed to deliver this final report with recommendations and a roadmap. So as you're writing down, I like, I wish, I wonder, I question, these four points are important because we were not asked to do a detailed exhaustive meta-analysis study. We were not asked to go out and do a market scan for what was going to happen specifically to chromatic grading. We were asked to do these things. And I want to make sure when we get to questions, that we understand the direct connection between the project goals and how our recommendations surfaced. Now, if you look at process and you say, how did this come about or how did we get here? As Stephanie mentioned in her opening, we had, you know, some opportunities to think about a limited amount of time that we were involved and a limited scope in terms of where we could go and how we could get to those outcomes in the time we had. What I really like about Oakwood reaching out to an expert team to look at the APEC Committee research, to look at your history with this work, what I really think is cool about it is that it gets an external perspective. Throughout my career, anytime I've wanted to know if something's really working, I don't want to just compare myself to the school district next door, or to the school districts in Ohio. I want to understand the national and international lens and those related benchmarks of where this work is going. So we tried to take that in stride and think about, okay, how could we have some meetings during our planning and discovery phase? Review the APEC documents, make sure that we were producing draft executive summaries among our teams to look at how we were representing learning and information, and to really probe on some of those comments as we iterated back and forth together. We also did interviews and surveys, which many in the community participated in. Now I want to make a comment about those. Interviewing 26 people is not interviewing everybody in the district. Having 37 surveys returned is not everybody in the district. It was not the intent to raise that to a statistical sample. It was the intent to look at your previous work and then align that and calibrate it against what people were saying and what nuances we were hearing in the district amongst stakeholder groups of parents, community members, teachers, principals, students. And as we took all of that information in context, we started to map that against 50 states and 300 Ohio districts. Now, how did we get to 300 Ohio districts? Your state has a large number, as you know, districts in the state of variant sizes. So we wanted to look at small, medium and large-sized districts defined by number ranges and see where they were coming out on some of their grading, you know, outcomes and see where they were thinking about in terms of their grading scales. And we used that as an input. We looked at that information and said, okay, that helps us inform both the national picture and an Ohio picture of what we read in the first two phases. Now, when we moved to really towards the summer and started to reflect and find our approach, we wanted to present some options. It was not meant to lead the witness or to make sure that a favored approach was surfaced. It was meant to get a pulse check on where people were responding and where they were coming down. We had really good participation there. It should be noted, however, that of the 455 respondents to the Google form, 313 were parents. I have several comments later on the SWOT that I'll talk about there, but that was not critical mass around students, not critical mass around teachers, not critical mass around community members. It was critical mass around parents, and that's an important point as we begin to talk about the further session. Now, arriving tonight, we want to share the findings, we want to make sure that we talk about the process to date and the roadmap. So that'll give you a little hint into that effort. Now, looking at Ohio, I mentioned that 32 of 35 of Ohio's largest districts use the 10-point grading scale. Over the past few weeks, in the comments and in the emails, lots of people wanted to parse out 10-point versus 8-point versus chromatic. What we wanted to do is really look at who was using different types of scales in Ohio and understand that data. 300 across the small, medium and high use a 10-point scale. And so we took that data in, among other inputs, and said, okay, what does that look like nationally? Now, I'm going to speak to this slide in a couple of different ways. I did not go into detail in my expert analysis of the experts talking about my career, but I'm going to pick up a few pieces from Doug and Tom's career in this slide with my previous work. When we start to look at assessment, and particularly assessment of learning or for learning, I don't go and look for chromatic research that supports motivation and incentivizing kids because it's not there, you won't find it. You need to start with John Hattie, write that name down, Visible Learning. You need to start with Robert Marzano, you need to start with Dylan William, you need to start with Grant Wiggins. These are the folks who have done a lot of work in what actually produces gains for students. So let's be crystal clear, we don't have chromatic grading at the top to incentivize or motivate student learning. What we're doing is looking at the national picture. When we look at the states that are advancing policies that are mastery-based, standards-based, competency-based, we're not only looking at what kids should know and be able to do, we're looking at how they demonstrate that learning, and that is directly aligned to workforce outcomes. This notion that grades somehow motivate and make sure that everybody understands their outcomes and what they're supposed to be able to do and demonstrate them. I would encourage you to look at the dropout rate of almost 40% freshmen in college who don't know how to think, create and do, and the recetivism in workforce as well rates. So states know this, and these states in red are advancing policy initiatives to look at learning outcomes differently. Developing states are also headed there, and emerging states are headed there. In fact, the state superintendents of each state formed a consortium called the Innovation Learning Network, where they wanted to look at multiple measures of performance. I sit on the National Board of Next Generation Learning Challenges, who has four different domains of student and learning outcomes. It is very common over the course of my career to go in the red states, the green states, the yellow states, and work on multiple assessment models. So as we think about how those policy environments are emerging, including Ohio, which has several initiatives underway to address mastery learning, competency learning in some way. We also paired this with multiple states who are using a 10-point scale with the stars. Now, one of the things that came up over and over again in our analysis is if you are so interested in mastery, standards-based or competency-based, then why would we arrive at a 10-point as part of our recommendations? It's a great question. So one of the things we talked about was where is the district situated? Where are they strong right now to handle any change? Where are some of their weaknesses? What are some opportunities we could think about together? And what are some prevailing threats? As you look at how we developed that, it was across interviews, across surveys and across other inputs. Now, I've spoken extensively about the interviews and the surveys, but after we got that feedback back, we started going back to the APEC research, we started going back to our core team. We had multiple meetings together. And while I love Tom and Doug, you know, it's not been a process of we're in total agreement or alignment. We talked a lot about the national Ohio benchmarks, the qualitative comments we were getting from the surveys, and emails from individual respondents, which were wildly helpful to help us frame the context, think about how to help Oakwood moving forward. And I don't want to underestimate COVID and post-COVID research in arriving and how we're thinking about change management, a return to school and the roadmap forward. So as we build that up, some of the things that appeared as headlines, there's a lot of data behind this, but some of the headlines. 455 people responded, 313 respondents were parents. The seventh and 12th grade rollout was the most favored pilot option, and the 10-point scale was the most favored option internally. So let's linger on the right side of this graphic. If multiple states are moving to 10 points, if that gives us an opportunity to not be so subjective in the range between 90 and 92, for example, then what we've got an opportunity to do is first of all, get aligned with Ohio and multiple states in the country, but we also have to think about how we pilot it. So when you see a recommendation like 7th through 12th grade rollout, it's not that, you know, that recommendation is going to be something that's going to be turnkey tomorrow morning. It's we wanted to get a pulse on how we might roll this out to serve students in the best way in the time period that we have. Other headlines that I thought were really important to mention from the Google forms as we move to, as we move to our recommendations, time for your feedback, just a reminder that if you like things, if you wonder about them or question them, make sure to write them down. And here's an area that you might have questions about. Multiple people cited that they had a lack of transparency and trust in the process. What we felt as an expert team was that we were having frequent conversations with the core team. We were having frequent conversations with, you know, members that were involved in the interviews and surveys. We were returning and responding to emails, we were collaborating around phone calls. And we also were making sure that our process was reported as to when it would be completed, when different things would come out around it. In terms of chromatic grading continuing to be favored, that was a high theme in the comments. The expert team looks at that around the nuance, the subjectivity, the lack of evidence and research nationally and globally, and says, if you're going to engineer a change towards mastery or standards-based or competency, spend your time there, not splitting hairs around point values. That has nothing to do with learning. So we're going to talk about that in the Q and A and how strongly we feel that that is not the move. The expert team was mentioned several times, that we had an agenda. Well, you know, I wouldn't be in business- Well, you know, I wouldn't be in business if I went and told falsehoods or I. Went in to try and confirm my beliefs or bias. I went into this with several things that I am extremely passionate about. For instance, I've done my deepest work in competency based ed and led the PACE work in New Hampshire. If it were up to me, we'd all have report cards like Sanborn in New Hampshire or the other PACE districts that got national attention through the Aurora Institute. It's not up to me. I have a lot of discussions with my core team members, my expert team members. My job was to facilitate the process, and that's where we arrived tonight. People mentioned several times that AP courses and honors courses needed to be a part of the model. We spent some time in that discussion and particularly looked at it. In terms of whether it rose to the level of recommendations. We did not think it it rose to that level for multiple reasons. And we think we're seeing not only a trend nationally to reimagine highest honors, you know, those types of levels. But that was not part of where we wanted to end up as a starting point. There was also some evidence that, you know, Oakwood already was underway on some of those initiatives. Finally, the pilot and implementation process was questioned multiple times. The whole reason of a pilot, a prototype. Is to do a plan, to do that work, to study the results and act on the changes. There's been no formal structures of the pilot shared so far. We've just shared in our recommendations. You should do big thinking, a small start, and you should learn very fast based on data. That's how you should approach the work. So no prototype pilot has been structured or recommended tonight, other than you need to have that as a part of your process to test it. So that you can gain efficacy around students and staff. As we move to the swats, a few things that I wanna make sure we touch on. The strength process builds on the APAC work. The engagement was high and candid. There was a lot of open dispositions towards grading options for every parent that, you know, was very focused on chromatic grading. There were multiple parents, multiple students, multiple teachers. Who thought the current model was fine. There were multiple people who wanted to see alternative models. And certainly, looking at the national and Ohio benchmark data. We thought it not only supported ten point scales, but we thought one of the ways in, one of the early entry points was to understand alternative scales. And one of those most preeminent scales is the A B C D E F scale. Which allows you to begin to look at, you know, how you're assessing mastery learning, how you're looking at those outcomes. Across a range instead of a minutia point value. And Doug will speak a little bit later to that in questions. When we looked at weaknesses. You know, I have to be candid here because I said on the interviews, I conferred with my team, I looked at the data. I think you need to step back and reflect that fair and accurate doesn't just mean for your student or your child. That when we really get to fair and accurate grading, one of the reasons we have such high failure rates in that first year, particularly among boys. Is they've played the game of school. They actually haven't learned resilience, creativity, how to critically think. How to make sure that essential skills are a part of their outcomes. So what we're trying to do here is to create a culture that's fair and accurate, to make a recommendation to how that might proceed. Grades shouldn't be viewed as a win lose arena. We want to make sure that stakeholders develop trust in the process because they're a part of it. And chromatic grading has a level of subjectivity that other grading scales also require in terms of on the front end, understanding, learning, reading about. But it's a model that's not evidence based. Where when you look at mastery or standards or competency. We can point to areas where that is actually producing outcomes, not only in national assessments. But in alternative assessments like the College Work Readiness Assessment. So as we look at opportunities. You know, we felt there was an opportunity to move to a ten point grading scale. To launch a district professional learning community, to learn more. To contract with someone who could lead you through that process that was objective and was allowed to. You know, facilitate those outcomes so that other people could lead and you could work on that through a train, the trainer model. And I think based on what we've read, and this will also be picked up in the threads. We all in this country need to do more to expand equitable and inclusive learning agendas. I know that work is underway in the district so far. And that requires us to move from an individual perspective and the threats. And what's best for our child and our home, but to look at a community perspective. And how that works across outcomes for all of our students and those that we go to school with and those that we interact with in the community. There's an evolving student admissions market right now. Whatever you thought you knew before COVID, check again. Check the research by Pew, check the research by Strata, check the research by Ed Surge. Look deeply at what Adventures is writing about or McKinsey. They're all talking about this market based on outcomes, not based on scores, not based on point values. As we look at a lot of the COVID changes. Tom was awesome at reminding us that admissions officers in multiple states have waived SAT requirements. They're looking different differently at assessments and how they assess talent and how they value scholarships. Yes, there are still things that are related to point values. But that arena is moving rapidly towards looking at total assessment. When we look at teacher subjectivity and capacity or change management versus expediency. We are talking about things that we want to be thoughtful about. So part of issuing the roadmap tonight and moving to our Q and A is how might we do it? As I conclude my remarks, a couple of things in the essence of time and Todd, you borrowed six minutes at the beginning, so I promised to wrap in four. But when we look at, you know, how I've approached anything in my career. And Doug, it had similar experiences and so had Tom. We wanted to orient people to a research based empirically based, going back to TQM, Deming, Peter Singay at MIT. Engineering Design Process. How we think about planning, doing that work, studying the results and acting on the changes. What we are presenting to you tonight is our recommendations. That is the first leg of where we are. Now it's important to take those recommendations and begin to activate them and continuously improve. The PDSA does that, and that's part of our recommendations. As we move towards our final remarks and some of our Q and A part of the night. The recommendations were to transition to a ten point scale for seventh through twelfth graders in twenty twenty one, twenty two school year. Not only was this supported by evidence and research, but it represented an opportunity to start small, learn fast. Get more students eligible in that A range to make sure that they had some assessments that were in line with Ohio peers. Same thing with a B or a C frankly, all the way down to being assessed in multiple ways. You might remember that we had some no zero policy language in some of our earlier work, but you don't see it in the final recommendations tonight. That appears in the PDSA year where we might study that further, look at that more deeply. That's a good example of something that didn't rise to the level of a recommendation, but could easily be a part of your ongoing work. We did, however, think with the move towards mastery, standards and competence based learning nationwide. That you should start somewhere. You should start to study something like the A B C D E F scale. And you should learn about it. And you should have a process much like digital curriculum purchasing, much like. You know, how you think about software products where throughout the year, you have a process to learn, rate, evaluate. Every school district that I advise right now, I tell them to get rid of the three year contract. To get rid of the five year strategic plan. We don't live in that world anymore. We live in an annual world. We need to stop doing autopsies at the end of the year. We need to do diagnosis every quarter on what we're learning. And that's how you could get started understanding that A B C D F scale and learning from it. There's not a single district in the United States who's achieved breakthrough outcomes without professional learning communities or some version of it. Communities of practice research through Edison Wagner. Professional learning communities through Rick Defore and Aker and Solution Tree. This is well documented. When you start applying it to annual review processes for things like fair and accurate grading, you will get better outcomes. You need a Sherpa, just like you've had in this process, somebody that can lead you. We think that's an important recommendation. So that they can bring different voices together. And make sure that everybody has shared direction, alignment and commitment to what they're learning. And what those possible outcomes are. And I would advise as long as the expert team or as well as the expert team. That you conduct those quarterly PDSA's to see what you learn. Now, you may arrive next year and think that, you know, the ten point scale and the implementation process is the way you should continue to move. That's great, but at least you have an annual process to look at alternative models. And how they'll impact your students and how they impact people for years to come. So those are our recommendations. I want to make sure that we talk a little bit about timeline before we go to Q and A. And this is in your packets tonight or we can make it readily available shortly thereafter. Where we think that August to September. You know, we should talk about how we're gonna communicate this. We've had a board meeting tonight. We will make sure that that has further communications to the people who will do the work and be involved in it. And we think this is a way to start and to begin moving towards that district PLC to study fair and accurate grading. We think by October, it would be great after school opens to be up and running with your PLC. Working with a trainer to really understand what's possible. To continue to run those PDSA's in January and June. And to look to approve annually where you stand on modifications. What are you gonna keep? What are you going to adjust? What are you going to accelerate or scrap based on what the data says? And that's all a part of our roadmap moving forward tonight. So I reminded all of you at the beginning that we were going to do a little I like, I wish and I wonder. And there is a brief, Todd, as they're coming in both over the Zoom. And also over our slides. I wanted to orient you to how we're gonna take that feedback and how the expert teams are going to make that work. Okay, so there's a couple of things that you'll want to be up to speed on. At the top of this slide on your screen, you will see something called ahaslides.com. I'm gonna pause there. It'll be ahaslides.com. And you will see a backslash, capital E, W G Y four. That is the easiest way to go to your phone or to go to your computer and give direct feedback about tonight's presentation. You also can scan the QR code from your phone directly in front of the screen. Board members, you can actually stand and scan if you need to. But you have multiple options to grab the ways to give feedback. Todd, if anybody says, I don't like any of those options and I'm gonna present via chat. I will make sure to go to you and if you will be my docent to kind of look in the chat, we will take questions at that time. But just reminding everybody that we are, we have a link up top, the ahaslides.com. Go ahead and get logged on to that. And then we have a E W G Y four right behind that. And you should see exactly what's on my screen. And then you can also scan this code. So I'm gonna pause for thirty seconds just to orient people and then we will begin to take the questions and move into the response portion.
Great, while Brian's positive, while you guys are orienting, a couple of points of note. The questions and answers should come through the Q and A portal of the platform and not the chat. We'll capture those in the Q and A. And then just as a matter of business, the slides in this meeting, the recorded meeting will post at approximately eight PM. On our website, on the district website, so two points of business there. Brian, I have one question for you if you're if you're game. And that is, and I think this refers to the four hundred and fifty five people referenced as surveyed. We mentioned three hundred and thirteen parents had answered. The question is, who else answered the survey if not parents? So I guess who were those hundred and forty two others?
Some undefined, some district staff, teacher or principal, some students and some community members.
Thank you. Okay, folks.
So as we transition to this first slide, Todd. Those of you, it looks like about fourteen people have logged on and we're climbing at present. It says, choose an adjective that represents your level of like or agreement with the recommendations. So if you're on your phone, you can choose excited, reasonable or insufficient, all right? And we'll take a few moments for those bar graphs to populate live. And there may be some folks that are in the chat who still have not been able to ask access aha. Or are having trouble making that connection. For now, we'll go off the bar graphs, Todd, and we'll give a couple of responses and then move to the open Q and As where we'll take them live from the board and also from the Zoom. I'll give a couple more minutes to populate folks that are using aha and making sure that we've got. We're up to about nineteen users right now. We've got some questions coming through, but you can see some of the initial bar graphs from excited to reasonable to insufficient. Now, what this is intended to do is to read the room among thirteen people. Not among the entire district, not among the thirty six that are on the call right now. It's to look at some of the initial reaction to what's been presented. So we've got sort of a leading comment tonight about reasonable. Like I understand kind of the process and what you went through. But we also want to speak to folks who feel it to be insufficient. Or, you know, folks that were excited, we'd love to hear some of your likes. And when we get to that point, we'll be able to talk a little bit more. So I'm gonna open one more minute, Todd, just for that to populate and then we'll move to the Q and A.
Okay, let me, actually, here's a. Here's a question maybe about process for this evening, Brian. How do you answer this survey only through this aha is the question?
Through through this medium on virtual, yes. But we want to make sure that they can also use the Zoom chat. So if they're unable to get to aha or if they joined later. Just indicate in chat if we've got some excited, reasonable or insufficient.
Okay, here's a, here's a, here's another question. How is it quote accurate or fair end quote? To have a student earning an eighty in the class have the same quality point as a student earning an eighty nine? Also, how was it accurate or fair for a student earning an eighty nine in Oakwood? Have a different quality point than students at similar high schools in Ohio and around the country?
I have a response, but I'm going to go to Doug first. Tom, if you want to build on that and then I'll close, Doug.
Sure, first of all, thank you for such a thoughtful question. I think you've raised precisely the right issue. How do two students with similar levels of performance get wildly different grades? So the questioner says, how was an eighty in an eighty nine getting the same grade? I think that's well taken. I would also ask, however, what about the student who gets an eighty nine versus a ninety? The first is a B, the second is an A. Statistically, that is a distinction without a difference. So it's, so I won't, I promise not to give a big lecture on this, but I think you've raised really the essence of the issue. What we want to do is as teachers, as parents and and as future employers. Is to have students focus on proficiency, not points. So frankly, the difference between eighty and eighty nine doesn't matter. Those are both Bs. If they want to move from a B to an A, I don't want them to talk about more points. I want them to talk about what do I need to learn and show and do? What, what performance do I need to have to move from the B to an A? Nobody got selected on the Dean's List by extra credit points. They do it by learning, showing and doing more. Nobody gets promoted to partner in a law firm by extra points. They do it based on performance. So I just want to really appreciate the question because you've hit at the essence of it. A B C D F grading. You know, that's, that's the fundamental accuracy, not these hundred point differences. And also I would just say that, that before I finish, Brian, A B C D F grading is not new. That's what we've had for almost four hundred years of public application. The hundred point scale is what is relatively new and manifestly inaccurate. It gives kids all the wrong, all the wrong messages. All you gotta do is get more points, not what do you have to learn, show and do? Enough said.
Thanks, Doug. Tom, do you want to build on it from the missions perspective? And I have one more thought to build on Doug's. And I have one more thought to build on Doug's. And Tommy maybe.
I was on mute, I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you for that question. I want to say too, as it did Doug, that is really the essence of what we're talking about. The difference between an 80 and 89 from school to school. And believe me, at the admission level from every school in the nation, and there's over 3,000 four-year institutions. That is key. And what every institution will do is take a transcript and put it to their own evaluation scale. And there's so many out there that the A, B, C, D, F is really what institutions would much rather see. But in this day and age with the uh, with the 10 point scale and probably giving a better broader in the next year. Uh, look at institutional or students and coming from high schools to institutions. It's a, it's a good move to be doing right now.
Thanks Tom. Todd, I want to build on Doug's response to that question. So not only is it the right instinct to ask it, but consider our role as an expert team on what you were able to actually do this fall. So if uh, we had not recommended the 10 point. One of the prevailing responses, one of the things we were seeing across Ohio and the nation. Is you were often going up against other assessments at present on the eight point scale. So there was a lot of feedback in the responses that like, you know, if we stay on the eight point scale. Our students are really at a disadvantage based on the way Ohio looks at it. And the nation looks at it with more states favoring the 10 point. We thought that level of change for Oakwood was sufficient right now. Doug and I talked at length though, about what was actually needed. And Doug was the one who said, look, in every scenario in this country where that has been rushed. If we would have bestowed on you that you moved to A, B, C, D, F today. That would be a mistake. You have to really study that and you have to really learn what's involved. That is a better use of your time than chromatic grading. Because there's more evidence in that approach to what we're seeing, not only historically and recently. But where the country and world is going in terms of assessment. So I want to be clear that our recommendations weren't always based on, you know, whether we were parsing out a point here, a point there. They were also based on how you were going to be able to proceed. So when we think about, uh, Doug, you want to say one more thing there?
I, I would just add, I, I really appreciate Brian, your, your sense of, of local ownership. You know, you can look at all the external evidence you want to. But the Plan Do Study Act is about what we do locally. And I can tell you, you know, I, I've been in districts where they look at outside evidence for five years and nothing happens. In one year, they look at locally created evidence, teacher to teacher. What's, what's the person in room 203 doing? I know works with our students, with our culture, with our agenda, with our union bargaining agreement. I know it works here. That's sort of colleague to colleague persuasion, 10 times is better than a thousand hours of Brian and me.
Thanks Doug and um, Doug and others are dropping resources in the chat for our uh, participants tonight. To, to begin that learning journey, to unpack this stuff and understand it a little bit deeper. Now Todd, I want to pivot to actual questions on the aha, so we can see some of them visually. Folks using uh, you know, aha tonight, you don't have to put your name. You can just type in a, a wonder about or a question. And we also can have Todd monitoring the chat for other questions that are popping up. While people take a few minutes uh, for the experts to respond. So Todd, is there one in the chat that we've missed while people are responding?
Yeah, there are and um, so here's a, a bit of semantics maybe, or maybe it's just my late understanding. But uh, for the, for our expert team as you're posting in the chat, if you could post in the Q and A portal that facilitates access to the majority of the participants tonight. And if, if not, then we're able to carry it over. Uh, a question, another question for the team. How does this scale equate in terms of a GPA versus a GPA with a chromatic 10 point scale?
Uh, I'll, I'll take a crack at that. The, you know, GPAs have traditionally been A is a four, B is a three, C is a two, D is a one, F is a zero. And um, you know, I'm not going to die on the hill of whether you want to do a three or a 3.5. But here, here's the issue from a teacher's point of view. And I would argue as both a teacher and a parent, teacher and parent point of view. Do we want our kids to be fighting over points or striving for performance? So the more gradations you have, 3.6, 3.7, 3.8 and so on. The more likely you are to have a striving for points rather than performance. I think we're much better off saying you had quality B work here. If you want to move from a B to an A, here's the level of, of, of skill. And here's the level of rigor and complexity that you have to have to move from the V to an A. I think that, that better prepares our students for college and that's certainly better, better prepared for the world of work. I, but I also respect the fact that reasonable people can differ about this. I'm just offering, you know, one person's point of view.
Thanks Doug and God, I dropped the actual link in the chat if that's easier for people. But we also will leave the chat open for questions as well.
So Brian, I have another question if you're ready for another one.
Yes sir.
Alright, so I, maybe, maybe a request more than a question. But I wish there was a definition list presented to define these terms and ideas. I was unable to complete the survey because I did not understand the nuances. I am in favor of the 10 point scale, being curious how this will play out. Request, please consider adding a definition list for the future, especially if we evaluate how this is going annually.
So totally fair, as many may remember, when we've sent out the first survey and the first interview response. We gave some definitions from the executive summary of how we arrived at those elements. We also shared an article and framed follow-up responses to why that article was shared to deepen understanding. The other thing we did on the interviews was start out the interviews by explaining those on a little bit more depth. But I think it's a totally reasonable request to do Todd, like a, a one-page follow-up glossary. And I'll take that on and share it with my colleagues, just so all have a quick, you know, glossary of definitions in the post.
A few more coming in here, Brian, if I may. Um, for maybe a point of clarification, uh, the email that the district sent out Friday mentioned that uh, email questions could be, could be sent. And, and I, I, I guess the question to you Brian and your team is, did you receive any questions?
We did receive one that I'm aware of personally. I can't speak for Doug and Tom, but there was one uh, Friday night uh, that I received. And uh, I shared at that time, based on the nature of the email that we would be sharing on Monday. Sort of the finals and the road, our final roadmap and process. So if that particular email that came to me specifically still needs address after tonight, more than happy to respond. But given the timing in the weekend, that was my choice.
And I, I believe if, if the question intends to refer to emails that we've received over the weekend, we have received a few. And if tonight's uh, presentation and the Q and A session and the engagement doesn't indeed answer those email questions. Uh, we can, we can follow up on that as well. Um. Another question here, is an inherent conflict of interest that the consulting group says we need a consulting trainer? Why are we spending more taxpayer money on a further study if we have made a decision?
Uh, well, well. Qualified to jump into that. Uh, the reason that I would not accept um, any fee for this engagement was that I, I anticipated this question. So uh, I, I deliberately did not accept any, any funds for this. I do hope uh, that we will be able to, my organization, which does a lot of training on grading, will be able to compete in the future. But there is absolutely no, uh, no expectation or no guarantee, no promises that we're the provider. Lots of people do that, but I, I deliberately did not accept any payment because I did not want there to be even a hint of a conflict of interest. So thank you for raising that. I appreciate the opportunity to clear the air on that.
Thanks Doug and I would add to that Todd, that um, it, it would be a conflict of interest if somebody specifically recommend their own services. But part of this work is that you do need a guide or a Sherpa through this process of fair and accurate grading. You need a process for selecting that contractor trainer. The trainer was not named, as Doug mentioned, it was an opportunity to say you, you will need that. Now, all districts have that process to select and uh, you should evaluate that and be on its merits. So I, I did accept payment for still taking the process, but as I've shared with the expert team. That's not my specialty to go and now work individually with the schools. So that would not be something I would bid on.
And, and just one more thing, the other people that you mentioned earlier, Robert Marzano, that friend of mine for 25 years, Tom Guske. There, there are others with Rick warmly, that, there are a lot of national and international leaders in this field who I think the district would, would benefit from. So um, I'm not holding myself out to be any, any better than any of those folks. I think, I think you've got the choice of a lot of really great leaders there.
Appreciate those comments, Doug and Brian respectively. Let me get to a couple more while we uh, say we're nearing kind of the, the time allotted. So let's uh, let's hit a few more, we have just a couple. Will the plus and minus go away on the report cards since they do not mean anything in regards to our grades?
Answers no. Uh, the plus and minuses on the report cards will stay the same. The only thing that is shifting is the 90, 80, 70, 60 piece puzzle.
Um, there was a, I apologize, I can't determine. There, there was a follow-up question that indicated that we didn't provide an answer to the question, but I'm not sure which question didn't get the answer. So if, if that person who said that didn't answer my question could, could reframe or restate the question, that'd be helpful in the interim. Uh, another question or comment. So the, so is this a one to four scale or a 10 point scale? I still haven't heard how this looks in terms of a GPA.
Uh.
That might be the same question. So there you go.
Right Doug?
Uh, I, I think we're all on the same page here, you know, it, the GPAs are the same they've been for 100 years. A is a four, B is a three, C is a two, D is a one, F is a zero. None of that changes that, that is the A, B, C, D, F scale that's been used for a very long time. And, and when we report GPAs, we average those, so kids get a 3.7 to 3.8. There's no change, nothing new.
Thank you, Tom.
I, I, I think also to be fair to our teachers and, and if we've had people who are asking questions to our teachers, I apologize. I, I hope that they're, they'll identify themselves. I think we need to honor the fact that you've got some great faculty members there. And they have, they are at the heart of what has created such a high performing district that you are. With, with a vast majority of your kids getting four-year college degrees. And, and it is simply a fact that expecting them all to have identical grading systems is a fantasy. I mean, no disrespect to the board, but honestly, teachers do things their own way. So it's just not true that we all fall into line doing exactly the same thing. Some may have uh, pluses and minuses, others don't. Some have, use the average, others use an emphasis on how students finish. So I, I just think we need to be realistic about the fact that you have a lot of, of individual uh, challenges that teachers appropriately place on our students to do their very best work.
Thank you. And I want to be fair to time, so I'm going to try to maybe take the last couple of questions. Brian, I want to make sure that you're not getting any questions on the, on your end. Let me see here.
Also monitoring the aha, so I, I don't have any coming through there, but there is a clarification on where the questions were sent.
There were not, uh, to answer the question, we're not, questions submitted ahead of time, other than the couple of emails that I referenced then. With those individuals, um, if tonight's presentation didn't answer or address the email, just like we have forever. Uh, we can follow up with those emails. Um, let me take these final two questions and then uh, and with respect to our experts' time. We'll, we'll call that, uh, we'll wrap it there. Let me start here. How does this affect the students GPA collectively from years past? Does the cumulative GPA get recalculated? No. Okay.
And I'm sorry, I, I mean, it's a simple answer. It starts effective for this school year. Nothing in the past will be recalculated or, or dealt with at all.
How do you get a 3.7 or a 3.8 if an A is a four and there are not pluses and minuses? I'm still confused by this.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Who, who, that may have been a, a, a parent who, who like me asked the very same question. And, and, and this is a good way to kind of uh, synthesize all of our discussion for tonight. There's two ways that we answer that question. One is, gee, Mr. Reeves, how many extra points do I need to get to move from a B plus to an A minus? I think that's a disrespectful conversation. The respectful conversation is, what do I need to learn, show and do to move from a B to an A? So you're exactly right, tho- those minuscule differences, I think diminish respect for education and for our teachers. Moving from one tenth of a point to the next tenth of a point. The respectful conversation is buckle down, young man. Here's what you gotta do to move from a B to an A. That's what prepares our kids for college.
Okay, I'm, I'm being told that there are several questions on the aha.
Correct.
So I just want to note that, note the time. When Doug.
Sir, sir, we're, I, I, I'm okay if you need some more time. I, I want to be respectful of the board's time.
I'm good as well and I can bring those up. It looks like they were.
I got them here, sorry. I didn't jump into that.
Yep.
Uh, how much does the district gain for the team trainer to implement the 10 point scale? Nothing that there is, that's our work, that's, that's internal work that we'll be doing. Um, if we need additional help, then we will contract with the outside experts. Or we have some inside, internal experts that we will tap first and then work from there.
Great.
It's very interesting.
Uh, the, because the district has numerical data from last year, I was wondering, no. I, sorry. You mentioned that universities.
Yeah, I'll take the um, I'll take the university one. Universities have multiple motivations, as you know. Uh, and enrollment and revenue is certainly one. The other one is that parents for the first time at scale experience the value of a college education in different ways. And they're asking questions now that they weren't asking before. We have more research about students taking a pause, going to a gap year. We have more research about what COVID did to learning loss and stopouts. We also have a national movement in credentials, certifications and workforce outcomes. College is being rethought as we speak. So while there will definitely be a future for our one universities and universities at scale. There is certainly changing times in terms of what COVID exposed and showed us and how learning is assessed. The, the other thing is we're seeing a lot of students who did play the game prior to COVID. And they got to their first year in college and they had massive trouble. Because they really can't think, do, apply. And that's what we're talking about here. The ability to actually show evidence and show mastery. Uh, Doug, do you want to take the one about why is mastery at odds with chromatic?
Uh, yeah, Doug, before you answer, let me just, this will be the last question and answer that we'll provide in the interest of time. So I'll be the moderator, I'll be the bad guy, but that's where we're going to draw the line this evening. Uh, as we've indicated, the conversation will of course continue, but this will be the last question we take. So Doug?
Yes, sir. And, and superintendent, I'm, if, if you want to put our contact information, make it available, not just to people here, but to others. You know, I, I answer questions from around the world every day. So I'm totally fine with you putting my, my contact information out there. I'm not saying I've got all the answers, but it's, it's like the State Farm guy, I've, I've seen a thing or two. Uh, with respect to the chromatic versus proficiency. Number one, man, you have nailed the issue. This is such a thoughtful question. And, and I want you to think of it as if we were in our career and technical education classes. Nobody gets to come out of a welding class saying, I went in with 10 fingers. Nobody gets to come out of a welding class saying, I went in with 10 fingers, I came out with eight. So that's, that's 80%. So it's a B, right? No, it's not. You're, you're proficient or you're not. You're safe or you're not. Similarly, our students who do coding and other 21st century skills to, to be in cybersecurity and so on. There is no room for error. They're proficient or they're not. I, I think my objection to 100 points and chromatic scales is it gives the impression that a little bit better is okay. Rather than holding our students to a high standard saying, man, if you're going to be in, in career technical ed, if you're going to be in cybersecurity. If you're going to be in, in law school, you know, it's not good enough to be a little bit better. You really have to meet the standard that is accepted, that is established. So I'm sorry for that. That sounds like I'm kind of a hard-nosed guy on this, but that's what I want, not only for my students, that's what I want for my children. And I think we all do too.
Doug, thank you. Brian or Tom, anything to piggyback on that final comment or?
Just now that we've shared it and that it will post tonight, I echoed Doug's responses. I don't mind responding. And now that those parts of the report are finished and they're moving on to the next steps. And I'm sure Todd, you and Superintendent Ramey will talk about that in a few. But I am also open to answering those and I will follow up with the glossary that we requested tonight. Certainly can do that. Tom?
And I would like to say thank you for this opportunity and I too am open to answering any questions at any time with my information.
That's great. Gentlemen, Brian, Tom, Doug, thank you on behalf of the board, on behalf of the community, the district. For the, for the engagement, for the discussion this evening, for where we started and where we ended. The work continues as we have outlined this evening. The conversation continues. But, but with appreciation and gratitude. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. We're going to end the season.
Before you do that, I have just one concern that those who are on the meeting right now may just assume that they're going to automatically flip over to the next meeting.
I was going to let them.
Thank you. Well, I just want to make sure that those folks know that they will automatically be let in.
Or they need to.
Send back in.
Don't need to see, I'll let them know they need to.
You're ruining my vibe, Mr. Wilson.
I'm trying to take it out of your cell.
It wasn't a thing.
You were kidding.
We got to business the first we do. So I may have a motion please to adjourn this special meeting. Dan.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mr. Quigley.
Hi.
Mr. Stark.
Hi.
Mr. Miller.
Hi.
Mr. Duval.
Hi.
So that will end the CBA special board meeting. Now for those who are on this special board meeting, you will need to jump off. And then if you intend to jump into the regular meeting, jump back into that link that you would have received by registering a regular board meeting. And we will pick up there and give us maybe three or four minutes to shut down and start back up. But again, thank you for all who participated. As a reminder, the slides will be posted this evening. The slides in the recorded meeting will be posted sometime around 8 o'clock. That will, that will depend on when the regular meeting ends. But certainly this evening and on the district's website. Thank you for all the questions. Thank you for all the engagement. And for those in the regular meeting, we'll see you on the other side. Thank you all.